All right, we're back in open session. And we'll be proceeding to the public hearing. And you want to do this, you want me to? I can do it. Sharon, you want? So we've got a public hearing on a multifamily property tax exemption revisions. And this is Development Director Nick Bond's staff report. So if I stumble through it, I apologize. Background summary. On July 26, 2016, the City Council adopted an ordinance number 23-16, which established the city's multifamily property tax exemption program, Chapter 3.48 Port Orchard Municipal Code, and established the residential target areas designated for tax exemption. Chapter 3.48 applies the requirements of RCW 84.14 for designation and approval of residential target areas and approval for proposed development within those areas. Per RCW 84.14.040, a residential target area must be within an urban center and must lack sufficient available, desirable, convenient residential housing, including affordable housing. At November, on, at the November 13, 2018, City Council meeting during the Land Use Committee report, staff informed the council of a citizen request to expand, for expansion of the multifamily property tax exemption area to include three undeveloped parcels on the south side of Cedric Road, southeast Cedric Road, adjacent to the east side of Fred Meyer. This site is proposed for 113-unit apartment development. During this report, the council was made aware that the market rates, rents for apartments in Port Orchard were very close to meeting the definition of affordable housing and that other nearby cities have designated all local centers for multi-property tax exemption. However, the City Council is also aware that development costs in the downtown area are likely to be higher than development in other areas of the cities due to the expenses of providing below-grade parking and building on shoreline fill. By continuing the 12-year exemption in the downtown area, these higher costs for the developer could be offset. Since the downtown rents are likely to be higher than other areas of the city, the downtown also offers close proximity to transit and local service in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan goals for its local centers. After discussion, the council requested that a draft ordinance amending the city's tax exemption map may be brought forward for consideration at the November 20 work-study meeting. And the staff presented two alternatives. The council decided to proceed with the alternative that expands the tax exemption map to include the Cedric parcels, see new figure one in the attached ordinance, and also limits the 12-year tax exemption to the downtown area along with the corresponding changes to the text of Sections 3.48.040. In the relationship to the comprehensive plan, the city's multi-tax, multifamily tax exemption program supports a number of comprehensive goals and policies, including providing a variety of housing types and employment opportunities that meet the needs of the diverse socioeconomic interests, incentivizes infill development to preserve and protect open space, critical areas, and natural resources. In conjunction with the proposed center strategy, enhance downtown Port Orchard's role as the center of South Kitsap region, reflecting the following principles and development standards and land use plans. Encourage land use that supports transit centers and promote pedestrian activity. Promote a mix of uses, including retail, office, and housing. Encourages uses that will provide both daytime and evening activities. Support civic, cultural, and entertainment activities. Provide sufficient open space and recreational opportunities. Enhance and provide access to the waterfront. Develop, enhance design guidelines and design review requirements that promote attractive pedestrian scale development and redevelopment within the city's historic downtown. Policy is prioritizes the city's residential, commercial, and light industrial growth and infrastructure investments within designated centers in accordance with Vision 2040 and the countywide planning policies. It creates balanced objectives for the accommodating growth, encouraging compatibility, promoting affordable, housing affordability, and offering a wide range of housing types. The city should support employment growth, the increased use of non-automobile transportation options, and the preservation of the character of existing buildings, built-up areas by encouraging residential and mixed-use developments at increased densities in designated centers. The city shall ensure that the higher density development in centers, easier within walking or biking distance of jobs, schools, and parks, or is well-served by public transit. Adopt zoning and development regulations that will have the effect of minimizing housing costs and maximizing housing options. Consider the creation of zoning and other land use incentives for the private construction of affordable and special-needs housing as a percentage of units in the multifamily development. Consider adopting incentives for development of affordable housing, home, multifamily homes through property tax abatement in accordance with 84.14 RCW, focusing on designated mixed-use local centers with identified needs for residential infill redevelopment. Implement zoning and development regulations which encourage infill housing on empty and redeveloped parcels. Consider programs to preserve or rehabilitate neighborhoods in areas that are showing signs of deterioration due to a lack of maintenance or abandonment. Staff recommends that the staff, the City Council, hold a public hearing on the ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 3.48. Fiscal impact, the Cedric properties, which are undeveloped, are currently assessed by the Kitsap County for approximately $11,573 in annual property taxes. Based on information provided by the Cedric developer, the complete apartment development would be valued at approximately $27 million and would be assessed at approximately $280,000, $280,000 in property taxes, annual property taxes. The city receives 16% of the annual property tax revenue, which represents $1,633 for the undeveloped property and $42,000 for the developed property. If the developer receives an eight-year tax abatement, the city will forego approximately $322,936 in property tax revenue that would otherwise have received during that period. However, if the abatement period, the city will receive on the ongoing basis approximately $40,364 more dollars more per year than if Cedric properties had remained undeveloped. At this point, I will open a public hearing on the multifamily property tax abatement map.
I was wondering if maybe you wouldn't mind rereading it since Jay was not here when you first started.
Yeah. Sharon can read that next time. I didn't know it was two pages when I said I would read it.
I apologize for being late.
It's okay. It's a hectic day.
Understand.
Already been excused, so you just need to go.
You're the only one in the audience. Do you wish to testify on the matter before us? If you do, you need to step to the microphone.
Do I state my name?
Yes. Your name for the record?
Robert Brand. So I represent the developer in this. And I think, you know, I appreciate Mr. Bond's summary, kind of laid out everything. I will say that the impact fees that were up against will be offset by the tax abatement. And so the viability of the project kind of hangs in the balance of getting the tax abatement for this. So we want to see this project succeed. We've already engaged local subcontractors to try to get this work done. And I don't know if you pointed out now too, that I'm pretty sure that that $11,000 that's being collected annually at this point will continue throughout the duration of the year.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for your testimony.
Quick question, sir. You mentioned the impact fees, kind of balancing out the exemption. Approximately how much in impact fees are you going to be assessed?
It's north of $1.2 million.
Is that right? Okay. Thank you.
That's primarily the traffic impact fee, or is that sewer and water connections and other?
Everything.
Cuma, you have sewer connections, water connections, building permits, and, and school impact fees, fire impact fees. So all, that's your total development cost then, not just the impact fees?
That was the impact fees.
Those are just the impact fees.
Not, not your connection fees to sewer or water?
Those, you include that as well, too.
Okay. So those are, so they're beyond the impact fees, and it's sewer and water connections as well and permitting?
Yes. In permitting, so.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. I'm going to close, at this point, close the public hearing. So we are on to our business items. The, we previously excused you, Mr. Rosa Pepe, but we're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
So we're at our first item, which is adoption of an ordinance, adopting revisions to the Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 3.48, multifamily tax exemption. Do you want to open the discussion on this?
Or did you, staff report?
I thought that we need to.
I don't know, I, if you'd really liked me to, I would, but I'm sure it sounds very similar to the one I read.
Exactly.
Previously. And it goes two pages. So.
Mayor, do we need a motion before we can discuss this?
We have discussion prior to a motion?
Yeah. Technically, you do.
Okay. And I will make that motion so we can have discussion. Hang on just a second here. Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance adopting revisions to Chapter 3.48 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second.
Can I have a second? And can, and councilman, as a motion maker, you can start that discussion.
Perfect. You know, I certainly do not want to delay this project whatsoever, and I think this project over the last couple of months has informed a larger discussion, number one. So I think really before we take action on this, I really believe it needs to go either back to land use or back to work-study next month, and it may be better off going to work-study where the entire council can be a part of that. Number two, because of the tragic events of this tornado tonight, I know that our junior taxing districts, some of them aren't able to be here tonight, and I know that the fire district wanted to be present for this conversation, and that's something that is a council, I think we've discussed previously, is making sure we have some of these other stakeholders at the table when we do this. But I think our conversations next month should not only be specific to this particular project, but to a more holistic approach through our city. I think there's larger conversations, and instead of piecemealing it, I think if we just buy ourselves a couple of weeks, I think we could, you know, create a solution that gets us really where we need to be in the future with some of these eight-year discussions, 12-year discussions, 10-year discussions, and really have these conversations at one time. So I would be in favor of tabling this to either our next land use committee meeting or maybe even more beneficially to the work-study session in January, if the agenda allows for it, for full council participation.
So tabling it, we're taking it to a council meeting.
Okay.
If you're wanting to remand it to a committee or to the work-study, I think then you would want to vote the motion down and then remand it to, if you're wanting to table it to take action at a certain date. Correct me, correct me if I'm wrong.
We could table it to the council meeting immediately following the work-study session.
We could.
I mean, our work-studies are official meetings. You could take action at the work-study.
True.
So you could table to date certain, which would be the work-study, couldn't you?
Okay. That's, that's an, an avenue to.
It's just postpone to date certain. Table it means it's off the board, there's no act of motion, you're done with it until something comes back fresh. So postpone to a date certain.
A motion's not been made. Just discussion.
So I heard the word postpone out of his mouth. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I'm wondering, that's several weeks away. Will that impact your project significantly? That would be, looks like January 15 for a work-study.
It continues to become, with a, with a softening market, and it continues to become more and more difficult to get this project done the longer we look for that.
I thought so.
And the risk continues to rise for us as well, too. So, yes.
Others? Comments? Questions?
I would support what I think Councilman Kuchardi's thinking is, that there needs to be a little more thoughtful deliberation. I'm concerned that any developer would just come and tell us that it doesn't pencil out unless they get this exemption, and I'm really concerned that we might inadvertently disincentivize downtown development by making this sort of, anywhere in the city gets this exemption. I'm very concerned about that. I don't, I think it detracts from the focus that we've wanted on making downtown more attractive.
Yeah. So to be clear, that's, that's not, was not my point of reservation.
Okay.
I hear what you're saying, and I think the discussions we will have won't detract from that. I just think that when we're getting into all of our discussions about all of our local centers, as some of our other neighboring communities have done, that might be a direction we want to move in, and I think to do it holistically might be better off than trying to be, and I'm not trying to slow this project down, and I think, again, tonight, a big, a big reason for me is not having our fire district here. We've heard from them, and I think it would be not appropriate for us to take action without, they've asked for a seat at the table, and unfortunately, they can't be here tonight. And so I would feel much more comfortable with them being here to be a part of this discussion, because it is something.
And Councilmember Kuchardi is correct. I have spoke to the fire chief a couple of times, and he did intend to be at tonight's meeting and wanted to have, at least make a statement and read something into the record regarding this. So whether that sways your decision or not, that is an accurate statement. Councilmember Clausen?
Is there any reason why we can't postpone it to the eighth as opposed to the following week? I mean, why can't we take action at the first meeting in January?
What I know about Director Bond's travel plans is he and his wife are from out of state, and they're leaving.
Not here tonight.
You're correct, because he's out at the, at the incident scene, and he's leaving next week, and they're going to, he's going to be gone for two weeks. I don't know that we'll have the body of work done for the first meeting in January.
Body of what work? Action on this motion? Basically, what I'm hearing, Sean, you speak to, is you just want to provide an opportunity for the junior taxing districts to come in and speak.
One, two, yes. And then the other thing is for our council to have a discussion about all of our local centers. Last part of this.
Can't they be separated?
Absolutely.
So we could do the.
Why don't we do it all on the eighth?
Well, with Mr. Bond not being here, we could separate the whole, all of our center discussion for the work-study and deal with this one particular situation at the next council meeting, where, like tonight, we would have an opportunity for the fire chief and whomever else that might want to come and speak.
We'll put it on the agenda whenever you want.
I don't see any, personal, I don't see any reason why we can't deal with this particular issue on the eighth, and just, I agree that I think we need to provide an opportunity to hear from, in this case, the fire district, but I don't know if any of the others might have something to say. But I'm also sensitive to the comments about, let's try not to delay this any longer so that they at least know what their future holds.
Others?
I can support both what John's saying and what Sean's saying. However, I personally would like to hear from our development director before I make a decision. So I don't know that I, and can I have those conversations with him individually? You know, that I'm not sure when he's leaving and how it would affect my schedule, but I know that I don't want to take action until I have a better understanding of what we're, of the implications of what we're doing.
He, he's in town through Friday, I believe, and returns shortly, right after the first of the year.
Well, if urgency's a goal, we could, we could postpone this to our, the first meeting in January, and then we'll see where we're at then.
Take, take action or continue to postpone that to the, to the work-study if there's more work to be done. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that Mr. Bond's not here, and he's put a lot of thoughtful effort into this discussion around the 12-year and the eight-year. And so I would feel better to, if he was just waiting until he's available, so it feels like the right thing to do, as well as giving the fire opportunity. Again, we want to see the project succeed. We want to support the community as well as the, that's what makes sense. That's not much better.
But I think hearing that testimony, I would move to postpone this to our work-study session in January.
That's the second, that's the 15th then, to the, to the work-study.
A decision could be made at that time.
We can.
It could be, yeah. So I'm.
We just, yeah, we just have to notice it.
And we've already conducted the public hearing. And so now we can take, I think, action at any time on this, correct?
So would we have, would we have the fire district come to the meetings?
I'll notify the fire chief.
Okay.
I'll reach out to him.
Randy.
He's a little busy.
The, the motion made by Councilmember Kuchardi, but I didn't hear who seconded.
Correct.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this to the January 15 work-study, and with potential action at that meeting, so we would need to notice it in that manner. Further discussion? The action? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The item is postponed to January 15. So we are on.
Appreciate your patience.
All right. We're on to business item B, adoption of an ordinance amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget. Finance Director Crocker?
Mayor, council members. The city budget is written to capture revenue and expenses over the fiscal period. During the biennial period, changes to the budget in both revenue and expenditures need to be recognized by budget amendments. Throughout the year, the City Council has taken action on projects and contracts. This will be the final budget amendment for the 2017-2018 biennial period to capture council action and any additional expenditure authority required to close out the 1718 biennial period. The Tremont project has several budgetary impacts, including the need for an interfund loan from the current expense fund 001 to cover cash flow. The Tremont wine project has significant reimbursable grant funding, which means there is a delay in the timing of payments made to the contractor and the city receiving its grant funds. The current expense, interfund loan, will provide the city with the flexibility it needs to pay the contracts in a timely manner while seeking its reimbursement for grant proceeds. The finance director recommends adoption of an ordinance amending the 1718 budget as presented.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 0XX-18, amending the 2017-2018 biennial budget for the city of Port Orchard as presented. Since we don't have a ordinance number, or do we?
Not yet. If justice, well, start out and should say, I'm to adopt an ordinance.
Okay. Well, an, an ordinance, it's hard for me to say, with the number assigned later.
Second. Second, and Councilmember Ashby. Any further discussion or questions about the budget amendments? Okay. We've been voting on budget amendments of the 2017-2018 biennial budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I want to compliment Noah for the format.
Thank you. We're trying to make it easier to understand, especially with all the budget amendments moving parts, the impact each fund.
Okay. We're on to, yes, Noah does an exceptional job, and I think, thank you for your compliment. So we are to, by business item 7C, adoption of ordinance ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 589, representing the municipal court employees. So Noah, you going to cover for Deb Howard?
Yes, I'll cover for Deb Howard tonight. The city's negotiating team consists of city attorney Sharon Kates, mayor Rob Patansu, finance director Noah Crocker, core administrator Sharon Ells, and HR coordinator Deborah Howard. And we have reached an tentative agreement with the Teamsters Local number 589, representing the city's municipal court employees. The agreement has been ratified by the municipal court bargaining unit. The agreement is not a public document until the council has approved and signed by all parties, and therefore is not attached to the staff report. I just want to make the comment that our team has worked really hard with all our union groups, so I'm pleased to see this come together, even though it is really at the last hour of this council meeting. We were literally printing off before we ran upstairs with the contract and getting it signed, so we worked really hard with all our groups to get it done, and I'm pleased that the court actually came forward and ratified their contract. So with that, recommend adoption of the contract.
Councilmember Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance ratifying the terms of the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 589, representing the municipal court employees bargaining unit, and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
Second. Got a second by Councilmember Claus, or Kuchardi. Further discussions of the contract? Okay. I'm just pleased that we were able to reach an agreement with bargaining group, and we've been moved forward for three more years. So all in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the contract is approved. We removed items D and E, so we are to item F, adoption of an ordinance establishing certain employee benefits for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA non-exempt and executive exempt. Mr. Crocker?
Mayor, thank you. Employee wage rates are addressed on a yearly basis for non-union employees requested by the finance committee. The following is recommended by the finance committee. All employees covered by this ordinance shall be classified and composite in accordance with the city's biennial budget. Effective January 1, 2019, the rates of pay for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA non-exempt and executive exempt shall be increased by 2 and 1/4 percent. Staff would recommend adopting said ordinance.
Member Ashby?
Yes, I move to adopt an ordinance approving the employee benefits policy to reflect a rate of pay increase of 2.25% COLA effective January 1, 2019, for non-union represented employees classified as FLSA non-exempt and executive exempt.
Second.
Member Clausen seconded. Discussion of this ordinance? Questions for Mr. Crocker? Okay. All in favor of adopting an ordinance establishing certain employee benefits for non-union represented employees, non-exempt and executive exempt? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then motion carries. We are back, we to item G, which was consent agenda item A previously, and it is adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 5.96, temporary vendors. Clerk Reinsen?
Yes. So in reviewing the new drafted language for a model business license ordinance required by the state, it provides that vendors participating in multi-vendor events can be exempt from business license requirements if the city adopts an order, ordinance stating that exemption. On December 10, 2018, the Economic Development Committee met and recommended continuing the current policy, which provides that if a vendor is participating in a multi-vendor event or trade show, they shall be exempt from having to obtain a Port Orchard City business license. Staff has prepared a draft ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code 5.96, temporary vendors, to reflect such change. Staff recommends adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 5.96, temporary vendors, as presented.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 5.96, temporary vendors, of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second. Councilmember Ashby seconded. And Councilmember Ashby, you pulled this. Do you have some questions? You for the clerk?
I do. And the clerk and I have had some communication on this. It was discussed at the Economic Development Meeting earlier this month, and the focus of that discussion was whether or not the temporary vendors would have to get a Port Orchard City business license. And the agreement, or the consensus of our committee was that that was not necessary. There are other provisions that have to do with having an annual income of less than $2,000. There were a lot of things. We just, these are folks that come into town or are hobbyists that come to the local festivals and sell their wares. And we didn't feel, they all have a state license, and so we didn't feel it was important that they had the Port Orchard business license. My concern, so we were all happy with the discussion at Economic Development. I will be very honest and say, before that meeting, I had not read the chapter in depth. I had just, I had not. And when it was in my council packet, I read it in depth. And when it was in my council packet, I read it in depth, and I'm going, oh, this must have been written in 1950. It seems to me to focus primarily on activities in the city the way they used to be done. It is, first of all, we want to know that it is only for events on public property. This has nothing to do with vendors that are maybe having, setting up shop in the public market on a temporary basis. These are only public property vendors, temporary vendors. So when I read it, there were many items in here that I thought perhaps needed to be updated. I did not think that we necessarily had the time to do that this evening. There were two particular issues that I would like to see different in this before we vote, I would like to offer amendments. It was also brought to our attention at the economic development meeting in a casual way by Development Director Bond, is that he's not sure that this ordinance complies with all of our land use ordinances. He feels there may be some conflicts, so he believes that we're gonna have to look at this. And I support that, I believe that the ordinance needs to be looked at more in depth, and so all of the little, the more minor things in here that were troubling me, I'm willing to look at in the future. The two areas that I would offer amendments on is under definitions, number five, public property. It says, "Public property means any sidewalk that immediately abuts a street, alley, roadway, where the general public has unrestricted access." So these vendor permits would only apply to a vendor that is going to put their shop up on a sidewalk. And I do know that we have vendors that use our parking lots. In our special events ordinance, we have three different areas where we define public property. One is land that the city owns that has a capacity or capability to hold an event, any site owned by the city designated or developed for recreational use by the public, and any road, public parking lot, city street, highway, boulevard, or place in the city open as a matter of right to the public travel, and should include arterials, neighborhood streets, alleys, bicycle paths, pedestrian ways, including streets or portions thereof which are designated as portions of the state highway system. All of those, those three that I mentioned there, the land owned by the city, which would be like 640 Bay Street, and then any site for a park, and then the other is the definition of right of ways. And we have events in all of those areas. So I think this temporary permit should include all of those. The other.
So what are you proposing for an amendment? Do we want to tackle these one at a time?
Well, we can tackle them. I'm proposing that the definition, and I've typed it out here, that public property means, it says right here, "public property means," and goes on. I would just say, "public property means," and list A, B, C, A, B, and C.
So once you read that into the record, and then we'll tackle, if we want to.
I don't think we should amend this tonight, I'm not comfortable with it, I think it.
So here's the challenge, is we need to adopt this tonight to be compliant with the new state laws relying to business licenses.
I think the middle counsel wants to interject as to why we didn't make those changes, that was one of our discussions.
That we did meet prior to bringing this to the council, is that there's some significant land use concerns with our code, and we felt that if we modified this here, it could impact the land use. And so we felt that since there currently is no temporary vendor permits license issued, and our master multi-event last, multi-event master license permits typically won't start until April, that we felt that January and February would be the perfect time to revamp this code since it's outdated, and/or make some comments in our land use code that will allow this code to be revamped the way that we're doing.
I would ask at the same time, if this code does not meet land, it has conflicts with land use, check our special events ordinance, because I bet it does too.
So if we're not concerned, so I understand the conflict we have, we, so we've got code, it doesn't, conflicts with our code and conflicts with state law, but if we're not gonna get any applications until April anyway, what difference does it make doing it tonight or in January?
So the difference is the, is the requirement that the business license element of it be in, it follow our own business license code section that we have to adopt, so that we address multi-vendor scenarios, so that we have a situation in our code.
To be compliant with state law.
To be compliant with state law.
Because I know our lobbyist asked me at least three times whether or not we'd fixed our business license code yet, and I said.
Right, and that has to be done by the end of this year.
This is the last piece of it.
Yes, so, but, but we do, we do understand that the concerns that are raised, that there are other elements of this that do need to be addressed, and that's something we do have on our agenda for, you know, at the beginning of 2019, to start working through that, to make sure we've addressed everything in a comprehensive way.
There is a section, if it helps as far as the defining what public property means, there is a section on page seven, section 5960402J, where it says that the vending site must be compatible with a public interest in the use of the street, sidewalk, or public place as a public right of way or a public park. Vendor should not block any public access through the public right of way, there shall be a minimum of four feet clearance for pedestrian access at all times. So this was our reasoning as to why we felt that we could leave the public property definition alone, and we can address that later, and this would allow us to continue if we get one.
Directly conflicts, five directly conflicts with the prior statement. So why wouldn't we fix it in both places?
The other, the other, as long as we're discussing this, the other point that I felt needed to be looked at now rather than January or February, whatever, is under insurance. Because, and again, this conflicts, or is, I shouldn't say conflicts, it's different than the special events ordinance. Our special events language said, in the special events ordinance, the applicant is to provide a certificate of insurance with minimum amounts of commercial general liability coverage and combined single limit automobile auto liability for bodily injury required by the city's insurers, our insurer. Okay, AWC is gonna say, for this event, this is how much insurance you need. Our temporary vendors thing has hard numbers in there, that they must provide coverage of not less than $500,000 per occurrence for property damage and injuries. So I just felt that those were the two areas that I would like to see brought current, and then we had, and then the other change in here is that they don't have to have their, they don't have to have the city license, so we're complying. But I have a hard time approving an ordinance that defines public property as our sidewalk. Because if we did have someone who wanted to come in and get a temporary vendor permit, they would have to hold that on a sidewalk in the city. They could not put it in our parking lot, they could not put it on Frederick Street, they could not do any of that the way this is right now. And we have several special events that take place during the course of the year. So I would just like to see this at least be consistent in that area at this time with our special events ordinance.
How does our farmer's market fall into this, or does it fall outside of this?
They're exempt.
It's exempt, it's exempted. I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to change the definition of public property in Chapter 5.96 to read, "Public property means, A, land the city owns that has a capacity and capability to hold an event; B, any site owned by the city designed or developed for recreational use by the public; and C, any road, public parking lot, city street, highway, boulevard, or place in the city as a matter of right to the public, of the right to public travel, and should include arterials, neighborhood streets, alleys, bicycle paths, and pedestrian ways, including streets or portions thereof which are designated as portions of the state highway system."
Did you have a second piece to that, or do you wanted to tackle it separately?
I, it makes no difference to me, I would also, in that motion, amend 5.96060 insurance to eliminate the language with a hard dollar of insurance coverage, and replace that with the statement that the multi-vendor sponsor provide a certificate of insurance with minimum amounts of commercial general liability coverage and combined single limit auto liability for bodily injury required by the city's insurer. The applicant's insurance policy shall name by endorsement the city of Port Orchard as an additional insured.
Is that a motion? And a second by Councilmember Claussen. Ms. Kates, do you have a problem with these amendment, this proposed amendment?
I don't, I think, for one thing, the insurance amendment, I think, makes perfect sense, I think that's a good idea. The definition of property was, public property is going to have to be changed, I think it makes sense to, to make it the same as the special events. It doesn't mean, we may not need to adjust it again once we have the whole land use thing figured out, but it doesn't work the way it's currently written, so I think the amendment makes sense.
I just wanted to clarify. Okay, further discussion of the amendment is before us. Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You were opposed to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we passed five to one, and now we're back to the main motion as a further discussion of the main motion.
Mayor, I'd move to postpone this item to our first business meeting next month, I understand what we're up against, but I think for us to try to pretend that we're attorneys writing code at the last hour on the dais is irresponsible, and I don't know that we fully understand the repercussions of that, and so, therefore, I would move to postpone this.
Okay. Is there a second to postpone? Hearing none, fails for lack of second. So we're back to the main motion. Mr. Claussen.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I have just a basic question on the purpose for making this change. You mentioned the state law, is our current business license in conflict with, with the new state law, or?
Correct, it does not currently have a carve-out for multi-vendor events. That's the, I think that's the only thing that needs to change, is that we are not allowed to, to require a business license from individual vendors who are participating in a multi-vendor event. And so we're required to update our code to reflect that. So that's the reason that this was brought forward to begin with, it certainly does need to be addressed, other, other elements do need to be addressed, but that is the one element that the city was instructed to, to deal with.
Providing exemptions that are called out in an RCW that are in conflict with our code.
I understand, I was just trying to understand that apparently the state passed the law that says we can't have multi-vendors, or we can't require multi-vendors to have business licenses.
Correct, yes. And our, and our vendor permit, it says differently, so we're commending our code to reflect state law. And, and then there's the bigger issue that this whole chapter of our code is outdated and needs to be holistically rewritten to, because as Beck, Ashby said, it's written in 1950, and we haven't looked at it.
It wasn't quite 1950, but I understand the modifications, and I agree with the modifications. But I guess if the state mandates that we can't do it, the whole purpose initially when we created business licenses was not to, to try to generate revenue off a business license, it was to make sure that vendors are reporting their sales correctly so that we could get our fair share of the sales tax, that's all. So, but if the state says you can't do it, you can't do it.
There's just threshold, they've established certain thresholds that you don't, aren't a lot, don't have to have a business license, is what they're stating, I think in the new RCW.
Good lobbyist somewhere.
Yes. Councilmember Roseppe?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a little on, slow on the uptake tonight, but to go back to Councilmember Cuchardi's point, I guess, not trying to write it on the fly, but I'm trying to understand what happens or what is the repercussions if we don't pass it tonight, make the changes at one, at one time, and Sharon, if you don't mind, you know, what would happen if we didn't pass this tonight? If we waited until we had, had a comprehensive change instead of a piecemeal change?
Right, well, I think that the, there isn't any, like, major risk of, of somebody coming in and protesting this, but it, we would be out of compliance with state law, and so if we, if there was a multi-vendor event, we would be requiring them to do something that is not in our code, and so it's, it's probably a fairly low risk, but it's, you know, generally something we would try to avoid if we can, being out of compliance with state law for any length of time.
And as I stated earlier, more than once our lobbyist asked to make sure that we got this done, and I'm not sure why it was such a hot button, but it was with our lobbyist. And I don't know, you know, we, and Noah corrected, there was another piece to this that we did months ago, and this piece just came to light here in the last few weeks, that, oops, we need to tackle this, and as Councilmember Ashby stated, at the land, at Economic Development Committee, Nick came and looked at it and said, we've got all kinds of problems with this.
Was that last week?
Yeah.
Yeah, December 10th, yeah, he said, "We've got land use issues with it." And I, quite honestly, like I mentioned, I hadn't read it in detail, but when I read the public property definition, I didn't see harm in updating it to make it the same as our special events ordinance. The same with the insurance. And then I felt that gave us a little more time to review the rest of it. According to this, we can't even put up 10 by 10 tenths on, on the property, and, I mean, there's just a lot of things, and we need to make sure that it's in our land use code. I, I had just felt that those two things we could update, and then we weren't quite as hard pressed to.
Councilmember Claussen, you have another comment?
Yeah, I, I kind of totally, not kind of, but I totally agree with your premise. I don't see that by our actions tonight, it's going to cause any major grief, and if we're gonna review this at a later date, even the language that we're proposing, if those who can wordsmith it even better, they can come back with a suggestion, but what is being proposed in the amendment seems perfectly reasonable to me, in that we're talking about more than just simply the sidewalks. And I certainly don't see any harm in establishing an insurance threshold that is established by our insurer. So I don't see either one of these two amendments causing any major grief, but having said that, they'll have an opportunity, whoever they are, Sharon, Nick, whomever, and if there is some issues, they can propose a modification.
I just don't see this as, we're gonna probably tackle property tax abatement maps first before we worry about this, so, it might be Feb, it might be February until we get to this.
I know that once we pass this tonight, we're in compliance with state law, and we've got time.
A little bit, yeah, till April anyway.
So this is scratches an itch right now.
Yeah.
I mean, bottom line, we know it's coming back.
You think that's coming.
But I take, again, I take Councilmember Cuchardi's point well-taken, that we're gonna be visiting it again, and is that the way we want to do business?
Yeah, not ideally.
And the fact that we have the very same language in special events meant, means it's already been vetted, so I'm very comfortable with, with what you're suggesting.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, six to one. Motion passes, six to one. Five to one.
Five to one.
Five to one, I can't count. Okay. With that, I don't, any council committee reports? I don't think finance has met, and you don't have a meeting scheduled, probably till after the first of the year. Economic development tourism, you met last week, and you talked about special events.
I think we got a report.
What else did you discuss?
Well, we, we talked about that last week, because we met on the 10th.
That's right, we did have a report.
We did have a report, so you're asking me to remember much too far back.
I already remember giving the report on some of it, so, that's right. So, utilities, you met yesterday, I think.
We did, and actually, I, I'm going to give a more thorough report in January. It was an update on our projects, nothing earth-shattering, mostly just bringing us up to speed, and I will give a, a better, a more thorough report next month. But our next meeting is January 14th, I think we agreed. Yes, January 14th. And that will be 9:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. And supervisory, I, the only thing to report, I would say, maybe I'm stealing Noah's thunder, is that the sewer plant had their state auditor's visit, and there weren't any significant items. I think it was emailed to everybody earlier today, so. And land use.
So, just a comment on land use. Our next meeting is scheduled for January 7th. Our Chairman of the Committee, Scott Deener, is not here tonight, but I remember hearing that Nick Bond may be absent during this timeframe.
No, he'll be back for January 7th. He's gone-
I thought you said he'd be gone over the 8th.
Confirmed that he'll be back the 7th. He's gone next week for sure.
Because I thought this, one of the reasons we maybe had to postpone the abatement issue was he was gonna be gone on the 8th. Anyway, my point is, we're not meeting again before the 8th.
Yeah.
So, I don't want the public to think there's a meeting on the 7th if no one's here, so we may want to reschedule that and take this off of public record.
Okay.
I mean, we don't necessarily do it tonight, but let's look at it because we won't be again.
Yeah, we're missing, we're missing two important pieces to this, and I'm not, I'm not sure what day Nick gets back.
Let's get that confirmed, and we can adjust that before the holidays.
I think he might be back. I was just concerned that he'd be just getting back, and we're asking him to change things and prepare something for a meeting that would happen-
Right.
-at the moment he walks in the door. Perfect, so. Okay. And Jay's still not working on lodging tax yet, but we're gonna get him there.
We're in hiatus right now.
Okay. Festival chimes and lights?
Yes, we decided we were going to continue to meet monthly, perhaps take a month or two off in the, in the summer of next year, and we're going to continue with the trees.
Awesome.
That went over so well. We're going to put a tree this time in every planter. We never expected that we'd have so many participants, so what we're going to do then is expand that, and we're working on plans, and very excited.
Quick question. When do decorations need to come down? I had two people ask me already.
Okay, it's January 2nd. We had that on the form, but we're going to be sending out an email to all the participants, thanking them, listing the winners, and reminding them, January 2nd is the day. So, thank you all again for all of your help.
And we were to look at holiday lights last night, but a number of us were not up to the task, and didn't think it was the best situation to put everybody in a van with a couple of people that, under the weather, so my schedule's pretty tough next, this week, I don't know about anybody else, but are we gonna try to reschedule, or are we gonna punt for a year? It's your call.
I would say punt for a year.
I think that's probably-
I'm into putting-
I think so.
Special teams as well.
Okay.
I think we'll have to wait.
Rob, do you think the clerk's office could put out a notice and ask people to just submit photos?
We can do, we can do a Facebook post.
It might not hurt.
I think probably I'll go on my own, too, and take photos of some of the neighborhoods that we can share.
Maybe just, just share as an album, not necessarily win a prize, but just-
And especially given that we've just had the tornado.
Pretty significant disaster, yeah.
There's a lot going on right now. It's a difficult time, I think, for the city.
Yes, I can't believe it. I wouldn't disagree. Outside agencies, I, I had, my last meeting is the Board Chair for Housing Kitsap today. And I'm still on the board, I still need to be on the board, and we're still a very challenged agency. I had Monday morning meeting with the state auditors and the finance committee. We, rightly so, have an audit finding right now. We, we are more than a year without financial statements or a functioning financial system software, and we had a statutory requirement to provide those June 30th statements by, there was a date certain in November, and we were not able to meet that, that agency was not able to meet that deadline. And so, I, I think in January, I think you'll see some headlines about the audit finding, and we talked about it in open session this morning at the board meeting with the press in the room. I mean, they're, we're working, they're working on it. We had trial balance reports for the first time last week, which is a huge accomplishment. And so, long story short, we had a piece of software that wasn't working. They tried to convert to a piece of software, and it didn't work. And now, we're on to another software vendor, and this is, it just, it's, I mean, the software conversion is a disaster, no other way to put it. And so, we've got new people in place that are helping us, and some outside consultants helping us reassemble our, our financial statements. It's, it's a mess. So, the, the, the state auditor has, they've audited us months ago, and at that point in time, it showed that the agency was gonna run out of cash in February or March. That's what the audit finding will state, and our response to the auditors is we have better information than that now, and the, the agency believes it has enough cash to at least get it through the current fiscal year, which is the end of June and beyond. And we have some real estate, and the, the bottom line is that agency lives off one-time revenue, and there's not a sustainable revenue source. And the problems that were created in the economic downturn, in particular, the Haverside condominium project that blew up, were never completely resolved, and it's a ball of yarn that we're still unwinding. So, that's unfortunately my outside committee, agency report. But on positive note, I drove out today on my way back from Housing Kitsap to the McCormick Village Park. If you haven't seen, Public Works trimmed some trees there at the entrance. You can see the entrance much better, you can see sightlines are much better looking out, and spread some beauty park, and we are gonna cut a ribbon at 3:00 on Friday. I hope everybody's there. Only a couple of you have responded, and I promise that it won't rain. Wow.
We're gonna be there, then.
I plan to be there.
Okay.
Be just a list.
We're gonna go ahead and go to sit, so.
Okay. Wonderful, and I met with our newest Senator, Emily Randall, today for about an hour and a half, her and I, and Josh Reese, and it was a great meeting, and she intends to be there, too, on Friday, so you get a chance to meet her, too. So, she's excited.
Are we still on for tomorrow? 2:30 with Michelle?
Yes, yes, we're meeting with, some of us are meeting with Michelle tomorrow, yeah.
I don't know.
John, I think, are you gonna be-
I'm, I'm gonna try, but it's real iffy right now, I'll be honest with you.
Okay, no problem. So, a couple of you, and that's fine. And then, I'm meeting Jesse, and I'm meeting with Jesse before the ribbon cutting with Josh, so. So, that's all I have for Mayor's report.
So, the mayor is clairvoyant. It's 47 degrees and sunny on Friday.
Told you.
That's, that's, that's what it says.
Promised you guys? I didn't say sunshine, I said it wouldn't rain.
I didn't predict a tornado today.
I did not predict a tornado, that's true. So, Noah, do you have anything to share?
No, I'm good.
I just wanted to take the opportunity to wish everybody a very happy holiday season, and I hope you all stay safe, and I will see you again next year.
Thank you.
Yes, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I will hopefully see you guys next year.
So, wish you all well, and safe travels, if you're traveling anywhere, even if down Bethel.
Well-
Especially down Bethel.
Just real quickly, I mean, it's, 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 we know it's a very tragic event for the city.
Yes, I, I gave a very detailed report at the beginning of the, in the meeting, so.
But I would like to compliment the city and the citizens of the city for doing an outstanding job of just trying to pull together. It's, it, we were trying to get all the kids, you know, obviously, home, and it was amazing how police fire citizens. It was awesome, it really was.
Yeah. This is what community's about. Yep. So, you know, keep all those families in your, in your thoughts. I mean, it's a horrible time of year to have your, you know, your home destroyed, so, and there was a number of homes destroyed today. Oh, my God. With that, our meeting is adjourned.
And we had a bus driver had his home destroyed.